Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, City Hall, June 18th, 2024, at 4:30 PM. We're going to begin this evening with Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned last meeting, June is PTSD Awareness Month. And last meeting, we lifted up our first responders, but we know PTSD affects a lot of our community, including veterans, the tornado survivors from December 11th, 2021, survivors of crime, refugees, and many others who suffer in our community. And so it's so important that we lift each other up when we've been through the worst. So I have invited Stephen Tyree to give the invocation today. Stephen is a Kentucky licensed marriage and family therapist and is retired pastor, who served for 30 years in ministry. He now owns his own private practice and he's married to adultery Tyree, who owns and operates Bowling Green Psychiatry. He's the father of five adult children and grandfather of two grandchildren. And Mr. Tyree, thank you for being here today and for praying for our community and over our meeting today. So if everyone will stand with me.
In God, we thank you so much for all the blessings you give us. Thank you for your compassion, your mercy for all the children of the world. We lift up, Father, this particular community to you. We know that you send us so many blessings and we are so grateful. We thank you for the leadership that's in this room to make the best decisions possible to meet the needs of so many people in this city. Father, we especially lift up today those who put themselves in harm's way, those public servants who are first responders, who are there, whether they are welcome or not, to do the best they can to serve this community, to protect families, children, neighbors, businesses. And Father, we just pray that they will have comfort when perhaps they're not respected and lifted up. We especially want to pray for those who've experienced trauma, those who've experienced horrific experiences that just are very hard to shake, if impossible to forget. And we pray for your comfort to their hearts, to lift the burden of the past experiences that have been overwhelming, scary, frightening, and even personally, personal injury and those kinds of things. So we're just so thankful that we are a community that can help one another and we pray that you assist us in grabbing on to each other, giving each other encouragement, and offering a sense of attunement and empathy when things just are difficult for our neighbors. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
I pledge with...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Stephen, and thank you, Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown. All right, at this time, Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide a roll call?
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Perrigen.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. Mr. Mizel, you have comments at this time, our city mayor.
Just a couple, Mayor. First of all, anyone in the audience wishing to make public comments, please sign the register in the back corner of the room. We'll take those up after the regular session. And then, second thing is, there will be a need, there is a need for a closed session. I'd like Ashley to read the reason.
Pursuant to CAREER 61811B, for the purpose of deliberations on the future acquisition of real property by the city, as publicity would likely affect the value of this specific piece of property to be acquired by the city.
Stop move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mrs. Jackson, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Our first item of business is our approval minutes from regular meeting, June 4th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. Any discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-117.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Logan Thompson to the position of Communications Dispatcher Two in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel. I'd like to ask Chief Delaney to come up and make this recommendation. Chief?
Evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, Commissioners, it's a privilege to be here tonight to recommend someone for promotion. It's always a great time when we're able to promote someone within the police department. Logan is here tonight. I'll ask her to stand. Logan started her, I want to say her journey with us as a college intern. After doing an internship with the police department, she decided, she liked what she saw and she decided to stay on. She was hired as a cadet in August 2021. At that time, we were experiencing, and we still are, a need for dispatchers. And we started a new program as a dispatcher one, which is a call taker. Logan was our very first one to enter that program. She's worked tirelessly to be able to get to this position tonight. Part of that is, she has to, she's been on probation. She had to submit a memorandum requesting to be entered into the training program for dispatcher two. She had to complete 80 hours of additional police radio training and then an additional 10 hours of evaluation by communication supervisor. And I'm proud to say that she's completed all those successfully. And I'd like to recommend her for a promotion tonight to dispatcher two. I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. Logan, I see we have some of our team from the dispatch here with you tonight. Do you have anyone else with you? All right. So stand up if you're dispatchers. Just recognize our dispatchers, our dispatching team. We're grateful for you all. Thank you very much for always answering the call. Okay. Any further due, Commissioners? All right. No further discussion. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Logan.
Okay. Municipal Order Number 2024-118.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Steve Coleman to the position of Fire Inspection Supervisor in the Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel. I'm gonna ask Chief Brooks to come up and make a recommendation for this promotion. Chief?
Here, Commissioners. City Manager, thank you for the opportunity. When we slow down and we reflect on our success, we realize that it's because of the support of so many that we are able to be successful. From our elected officials to our city leadership, tonight's about Steve Coleman. 16 years, working behind the scenes to affect the scene. When our firefighters go home at night, when they're able to do the things that they're able to do and return home to their families, we know that he's played a part in their safety. Tonight is rewarding a man for his elite level of service as his responsibilities have grown over the years. And it's also a sign to allow the Fire Department to grow along the city. As his promotion that's in your hands would vacate his position and allow us to feel rather quickly as the needs of this city continue to grow. I'm here with any questions that you may have. He could not be here tonight. He's traveling with family. But he's worthy of your approval.
Thank you very much, Chief. Commissioners? All right. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations to Steve Coleman.
Municipal Order Number 2024-119.
Municipal order authorizing insurance premium payments to the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for insurance coverages of general liability, public officials liability, law enforcement liability, automobile liability, and physical damage, property and workers' compensation for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel. So before you hear tonight is a renewal for several categories of insurance. All in all, we're looking at an increase of $180,000 for the upcoming FY '25. As Dave Wasbrot and I were chatting the other day, this is, some categories are up, some are down. But combination overall, we think is, you know, it's the perfect storm of inflation, tornado storms that have happened over the last year or so. And then we're just, we've got more coverage. We've got more stuff to cover. We're adding buildings. We're adding multiple million dollars of facilities, like up at Portapike, the new training center, Fire Station Five, and of course, Station Eight up in the trans park was added. And so, but all in all, we're looking at an increase of 180,000. It's kind of give and take on the different categories. You can see that in the memo that Dave put together. But we are recommending this renewal for, recommend your approval of this renewal. And Dave is with us today, can answer any questions you might have on this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Mizel, thank you, Dave, for being here. Commissioners, questions at this time? Okay. No questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-120.
Municipal order approving appropriations for specified eligible agencies for fiscal year 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, I'm sorry, by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel. This is the tag along that goes with the budget for the agency appropriations. Before you hear is the exact amounts that you all have approved so far with the FY '25 budget in the total of 1,002,1605 to our contract agencies that we have discussed during the budget. Katie has worked on this and is here, can answer any of your questions you might have on this, but recommend approval of these agency appropriations and agency agreements.
There are agencies that are here. Stand up and say which agency you're representing. Representing, Susan?
The Human Rights Commission.
Thank you.
The Human Rights Commission.
Thank you, House.
Goodwill Industries of Kentucky.
Thank you for being here.
City County Party.
Whoa.
Mayor, I do want to point out Tommy Loving was here for the first reading from the Drug Task Force.
We're proud of our municipal partners because the city can't do everything, but we have organizations that are specialized to do things very good and professionally for our community. And so we're grateful for our community partners. And I want to say thank you all for being here and as we approve this tonight. Commissioners?
I'd like to echo as well. I know when I went over there to Goodwill before, you guys are also giving people a second chance, especially when, I didn't get to meet you guys, but when you expunge their records. And we know that sometimes, like, you can make a mistake in the past, but that mistake doesn't necessarily define you. But the mistake can hinder you from moving forward. So some of these agencies that we have, you guys, the Human Rights Commission, you know, it's something I'm glad that the city is a part of.
Very nice. Okay. No further comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Thank you all. Municipal Order Number 2024-121.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application for funding through the 2024 Government Resources Accelerating Needed Transformation Program from the Kentucky Economic Development Cabinet in an amount of $23,276,000.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Commissioner Carlos Bailey, second by Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
So I'm gonna try to take a stab at explaining this program. This is, if you'll recall, House Bill, sort of got started with House Bill Nine, two assemblies ago. And it's now called the Government Resources Accelerating Needed Transformation Program or Grant Program. And basically what it is, is the state has set aside monies for municipalities and county governments, I think it's county eligible too, for match of federal grants. And so we are, tonight, we're gonna bring you three or four of these that we're applying for matching funds to go with our grant application. So this first one here is a request to match the Whitewater Park grant that we submitted for, for roughly $3.6 million. There is a match to the match kind of thing here. So it's 5% of this 3.6 we would pay, as we would, would match it, $364,000 on this particular one. But Nick, Nick has worked on these and can answer any questions on this one, but we are recommending approval to apply for this grant program to the state in the amount of $3.276 million.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mizel.
Brent, Brent Childers is here. Nick is not here. So, but Brent can answer your questions on this one. Sorry.
Okay. Entertaining questions at this time, Commissioners?
Just really excited about, you know, finding even other, I haven't seen this before, but finding even more ways that we are bringing in dollars to make our riverfront park happen and just bring this amazing reality for our community even quicker. And just being really smart about how we use our funds to really reinvigorate and re-energize and make that dream of the riverfront happen. So just thank you all for always doing this due diligence, figuring out how do we get there together and as fast as we can. So thank you all so much.
I happened to be at lunch today with some state legislators and asked about the funding for this. And it is now under House Bill 723, and there is over $200 million that was funded toward this program. So there is money available that we're gonna apply for and hopefully get some.
Thank you. Okay. No further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-122.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application for funding through the 2024 Government Resources Accelerating Needed Transformation Program from the Kentucky Economic Development Cabinet in an amount up to $285,298.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel. Same, same program again. This would be for the Scottsville Road Multi-Use Path Project. It requires a 20% match. So we are applying for that 20%, which is 285,298. If we were to get that, we would be required to pay a 5% match on that, which is $71,325. So that's a lot of leverage, or a little, just a tiny bit of money to leverage that much money in a match and grant. So request approval to apply for this one for the Scottsville Road Multi-Use Path Project. And Brent can answer any questions you might have on this one. Andy is here as well. He's actually walked that project and can answer any questions you might have. But we, we brought that to you a couple meetings ago, so you're familiar with it.
Commissioners?
Okay.
No further questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-123.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application for funding through the 2024 Government Resources Accelerated Need and Transformation Program from the Kentucky Economic Development Cabinet in the amount up to $225,000.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel. Again, this is a ditto. This, this one here is for the Jennings Creek Greenway Project that we, we brought to you. That's a $1.5 million project requiring a 20% match or $300,000 that we were gonna split with the city and county, if you'll remember that. We are asking permission to submit an application to get that $300,000 match from the grant program. And again, Brent's here can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? None? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-124.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of an award for Kentucky Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding from the Kentucky Department for Local Government in the amount of $221,635.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel. We were recently notified that we received the $221,635 for the CDBG DR housing funds. This is one we have been planning on to give to Live the Dream and Habitat. There will be two sets of duplexes built with this money and six single-family units built with this for affordable homeownership at Durbin Estates, giving us 10 more affordable housing units for, for our families out there. So 10, 10 new units. Brent, again, can answer any questions you might have on this one. And we're hoping to get this started pretty soon.
Brent, I'll just have one question because a lot of times, sometimes I'll get a question like, well, you guys only building 10 units. And I'm like, yeah, but it can hold more people. Those 10 units is more than just 10 people. So the question I have for you is how many of these 10, how many people can these 10 units hold?
I think they're all probably two and three bedroom. I'll tell you, our average household size is, what I use is 2.5 people per housing unit. And that works across the board. So if you figure two, that's about 25 total people.
Gotcha.
Roughly. You might have one with a single, one with three people, one with seven people, two with a single. But about 25 people is what I would estimate.
And I apologize for asking that, but sometimes I do get those questions. And I always tell them, one unit is not just one person.
It could be a family unit. It could be a lot of people in that one unit, so.
Hey, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-125.
Municipal order adopting the 2024 Bayon River Area Development District Title VI Implementation Plan for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel. We are receiving, or we are a sub-recipient of the federal financial assistance from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. And they require a Title VI program to be in place. We did not really have one just for that setup, but they said we could adopt the Brad's Title VI Program Plan. So that's what we brought, we brought to you here this afternoon and would like your approval for us to implement this Title VI Program under the Brad's Program Plan. And again, Brent Childers is here can answer questions you might have on adopting this.
Okay.
But this gets us in good graces with Kentucky Transportation Cabinet.
All right. Questions, Commissioners? None at this time? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-126.
Municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement for flexible neighborhood grants with Mount Zion Back-to-School Bash.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel. This is our 25th year of what we used to call the SNAP Grants, the Select Neighborhood Action Program Grants, what we now call flexible neighborhood program grants. And we would like to recommend that the Mount Zion Back-to-School Bash receive $7,500 for their expenses for their hosting the back-to-school bash down at Mount Zion Baptist Church coming up, along with our police department. We partner with them. It's been a great event every year and recommend the $7,500 of flexible neighborhood grants go to the Mount Zion Back-to-School Bash.
Thank you very much. 25 years, you said?
25 years of these, just our neighborhood grant program that we, we cover out of our general fund. It's been roughly 40,000 to 50,000 on average each year that we set aside for these to give back to the community for different things.
Commissioners?
I just want to first thank Mount Zion. It's always an amazing community event. And I mean, just families lining all the way down around the block to get their kids' school supplies, get them ready, to get, come show up the first day with everything they need to learn. And it's just such an incredible community event. And the police department, they're always there, grilling out. They're, you know, they're just in their t-shirts and shorts and just being a part of the community. They even saved a choking baby last time. So even when they're officially supposed to be just grilling, they are always protecting and serving. And so just thank you all for being such an amazing partner in that neighborhood. And it's always such a great event and neighborhood and community services. A lot of departments are there and just thank you guys for always being out there in the community and supporting.
I like to ditto that. I'm actually from that neighborhood, going from Combs Avenue and went to Parker Bennett. So you see it's hot during that period of time. And we know, like, if children don't have what they need on the first day, they can't do what they need to do to get ahead. So just being able to have a pencil or today, a laptop is essential. It's no longer something that is a luxury. And so there are children, when it's hot out there, just standing outside, just to get some of the things that they need. And sometimes it could be food. So when our police are there and they showing up, I appreciate them showing up. And then when they save the baby, you know, it's even made even bigger. But it's a great event. And then we're just making sure that any children, no matter where it's located, at least gets to have a start where they can, on day one, to be able to, to learn and stuff. So it's a great event.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-127.
Municipal order approving the Another Way Program Funding Agreement with Goodwill Industries of Kentucky Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel. I am excited to introduce to you some, some, some special guests tonight from Goodwill. First, I'd like to introduce Chad Spencer, Director of Client Services for Goodwill here locally in Bowling Green. Chad, you want to get up and introduce your colleagues and tell us about your program? But we would like to partner with Goodwill on this Another Way Program. And they're gonna tell you a little bit about it and how it's worked in Louisville and what they're gonna do for us here in Bowling Green.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you for having us. Yes, my name is Chad Spencer, Director of Career Services here at the local Bowling Green office, right across the street from Zaxby's on the bypass. Kimberly Boyd Lane and Sharon Alguire from our Louisville office, where we've been running this program for three years. I'll let her speak to it and then I'll talk to why I wanted it here in Bowling Green.
So, good afternoon. We're so grateful to be able to be here on behalf of Goodwill Industries of Kentucky. I'm Kimberly Boyd Lane. I'm the Director of Community-Based Career Services. And our Another Way Program is a workforce strategy to fill the gap in the labor market by providing individuals with not just a hand up, but an opportunity to use their natural skills and abilities to be able to move on their pathway back to purpose. We allow individuals to get on the van and then we take them back into our opportunity centers where they're able to be connected to the other resources that we have in, in our opportunity centers at Goodwill. And I have Sharon Alguire, who is our Senior Manager of Homeless Initiatives. And I'm gonna let her talk a little bit more about the program and the day-to-day activities.
So this is really exciting to be here today and I wanted to thank you all. To see how the program started in Louisville with just one old van and picking up three participants at the time, has grown from one van to five, to where we're actually able now to pick up 25 to 30 unhoused individuals throughout Louisville. And it's so exciting because we have a team of now outreach specialists who have once been unhoused, who are working with us, and career coaches. And what we do is we lead Goodwill around eight in the morning. We're eight, out from, anywhere from eight to 9:30 throughout the districts in Louisville, picking up the unhoused. We get them on vans. We take them to work sites, like working at the Kentucky Fairgrounds. They may do litter abatement. And we've even incorporated weed eaters and blowers. So they work for about three and a half, four hours. We feed them lunch while they're out. We bring them back to Goodwill about 1:30, 2 o'clock. We, we give them a $50 stifle, a four-hour bus pass, connecting them to services. And so it has been amazing, just word of mouth. It got to the point where our one van, word got out to where people wanted to get on the van, to where we had to pick and choose. And it has grown. Just, just getting, just meeting someone on the street where they're at. They say Goodwill gives us hope. Lives have been changed. This year alone, and we, and our participants can ride several times on the van if they want to. But this year alone, this grant, we have, we have had 1,800 new participants ride on our vans. 750 of them have been connected to services. If they want to go to treatment, we talk them into treatment. We drive them directly to treatment. We have placed, how many in jobs, Kim?
250.
250 in full-time jobs. We help them with their IDs, their birth certificates, their socials, whatever we need to do to help them become self-sufficient. And it has been the most successful thing I've ever seen in my life. It is really great. And just to be out there and to see our team, you know, in Louisville, in the camps, I call it in the highways and the byways, and just going to get them, has been tremendous. I see this, this program here in Bowling I see this, this program here in Bowling Green to being, becoming what Louisville has been, going from a small, you know, small, to building up within the years. Because word will get out, and lives have been changed. And I can tell you what, one person will tell the next person, and the next person will tell the next person, and it's been great. And I just want to thank you all for being here today.
And then lastly, you touched on something that we do, our expungement clinics. Well, now people don't have to wait for our clinics. We've partnered with a company out of Texas. So anyone that's ready for an expungement, all they have to do is walk in our door, and we're going to start that process, and we're going to pay for it. So when I first heard about Another Way in Louisville, I was up there at our opportunity center, and I asked Sharon, what are all these people here for? And she told me about the program, and I, in my mind, I immediately saw Broadway, the Taco Bell, the CVS down by Wendy's. But guys, that's the tip of the iceberg. Last week, I was up in Louisville, I'm going to get emotional. I was up in Louisville, and we have folks in camps that they don't even know about. But we were able to find them through our help with the other unhoused. That's my focus. I'm going to get those people on the corners, but I want the people living in the tree lines, living in abandoned buildings, we're going to find those folks, introduce them to what we do, and we meet you where you're at. I wear my shirt untucked for a reason. I want to be approachable. So we're going to meet them where they're, where they're at. We're going to bring them to the opportunity center, love on them, hold their hand in removing those barriers to employment. And as sure as I'm standing here, they're going to understand their success is my success. So all I want from you is to get what you need to be self-sufficient and get back to your families. I love this program. I love Goodwill, and thank you so very much for allowing us to bring this program to Bowling Green. It's going to help, I promise you.
Chad, Commissioners?
Mr. Spencer, you know, you know how I feel about it already. I come from nothing, but then I also see unhoused. So my, my, my family is, my wife's family is from Barstown, but also Louisville. Bryson Tiller's daughter is my niece. Yes. The famous singer, his daughter's my niece. But we went there when her father was dying, and we were in Norton's, and we was looking out the window. He was actually in hospice at the time. And we saw some homeless individuals, and almost like what you're talking about, Chad, just to give someone an opportunity, just an opportunity. Because the thing about it, my wife was like, so many people bypass them, and at the end of the day, that's still a person.
Yes.
And we still got to love our brother and sisters, no matter where they're at. And being able to get somebody back to their feet, and hopefully, God, hopefully, that you can get them back to their families, that's a great goal to present anywhere. And to have something that like here in Bowling Green, Kentucky, is not only a blessing, but I think it's an investment for our city. Even if you don't get credit, at least you helped someone out, and you helped their family members out as well.
Chad, I want to thank you all. I want to thank Goodwill doing great work, but creative solutions is exactly what we need to, to even touch this problem. We have, you know, other things going on, mental health crisis center, and some other things. But unless we find them and meet them, and how we find them today is we get a phone call. I get a lot of phone calls, hey, there's some, you know, there's a group living here, and it's never an appropriate place to live. I will say that, ever. And, and so, you know, finding them and then giving them opportunities and solutions is, is the way to go, and that's very creative, and thank you very much.
I would please ask you to redirect those calls to me. Redirect those to me, and we will definitely do what we do.
Chad, I'd like to add, we've had some working sessions with the Commissioners, and homelessness was one of ours, affordable housing. And it goes back to Commissioner Perigin. We found a, one of the things, the thread across was mental health issues, and we're facing those as a society. We have an endeavor that, I've worked with previous Goodwill leadership prior to you, and, you know, you have a big corporation, y'all move, but we're, we're thankful that you're creating this program, because it really offers incentive to help yourself and to take initiative. And self-initiative is so important, you know, having pride. But what I'm offering here is that we have a center that we put $2 million American Rescue Protection Act. It was unanimous, all five of us, and that's about to come to fruition. It's called the Life Navigation Center. And it's going to be open in August. We're real excited. It's taken a while. However, it's been, it's a facility that's being renovated, that has showers, it has a laundry room. But most importantly, it has collaborative offices for Goodwill. Because Goodwill was one of those that said, we wanted to be part of this, and I want to reinstate that offer, because the offices are there. We actually put some of the money back for operational, so some of it is being taken, obviously, for the, you know, to refurbish the facility. But it goes back to a facility that our city invested back 50 years ago in 1974. So 50 years later, we're taking facility that has asbestos, and we're taking a facility that was not being utilized. And it's not Salvation, they're, they're sort of the operational, you know, primary responsibility, taking care of the facility, but it's all of our nonprofits that wanted to be part of this collaborative solution. So this could be a hub for, you know, taking care of people at different levels, and we would love to see, because I, what you're doing with this voucher program is right in line with helping people help themselves.
Hotel Inc.'s office will be there. It's across from the Salvation Army on Main Street.
So I just want to explain a few more things. So Chad's going to do some tracking of data. That's all in the agreement. It's listed under Section 4. I'd also like to thank Brent Belcher and Brent Childers for, for helping me put all this together. Brent Childers and Leida Becker called me one day and said, hey, what do you think about meeting with Chad Spencer? I'm like, yeah, I'll meet with Chad Spencer any day. So we got together. But anyway, what Chad's going to do is Chad's going to work with Brent Belcher, and some of these folks will go work and help out our Parks and Rec Department with maintenance and different things. And so we're, we're excited about that. We might even end up with some employees down the road out of this. So we'll, we'll see how this goes, and, but I just wanted to thank the Brents and, and Leida, and Chad, and Hillary as well for, for putting the agreement together. But Chad's going to be accountable with this agreement and report all these different things under Section 4. And we'll see how this, you know, this thing's performing, and we're going to give it, do a year pilot on this, and, and we're going to, we'll give it a good shot.
We're going to work our way up to one of those out there. If you guys didn't see it, we're going to be here for a while. Take a look. That's what, five of those run around Louisville, picking people up all day. So thank you guys very much for allowing this program to come to our, our great town.
Do one more thing.
Take a picture of it. I would love to see it, because I can't see it from here.
Chad?
Can you give us kind of an update on your, your Opportunity Center and how you're, how that's going or timeline?
Before we change the subject, do you mind if I just, sorry. Mr. Spencer and Ms. Houchens, I just want to tell you all how inspiring what you all are doing in our community is for all of us, right? It's the five of us up here, we do this because we love Bowling Green, but it's folks like you who make Bowling Green the cities that we love. It's regular folks who see a problem in our community, are passionate about it, and then work to find solutions to make our community the amazing place it is today. And I know so many of us, you know, as we drive through our city and seeing the unhoused and see the suffering, lots of folks reach out, talking about, you know, what can we do? And it's folks like you who figure it out. What are these ways that we can meet folks where they are and help them, you know, get through all those barriers? Because you know, so many of them, there's just barrier after barrier after barrier. Once you become unhoused, to get back out feels impossible. And it's, it really can be something that you get stuck in without folks like you who are willing to go into those spaces with them with compassion and being approachable and being able to change lives. And I am just so excited that you all are going to start this program here, and I just can't wait to hear all the stories of, instead of folks driving by and wishing that these people's lives are better, you are doing it. And that is just so incredible, and I just want to thank you as well for what you all are doing, and just can't wait to see the amazing things that are going to happen because of your program.
Not a handout.
Yes.
Motto.
Chad, that's one of my favorite sayings, so thank you. And I think our citizens are really going to appreciate it. They're tired of seeing the people on the streets, and you can only do so much, and we've tried to advertise saying panhandling's not safe. I cannot wait to see the numbers you're going to produce in getting these people for it.
Come to you.
That's right. So thank you very much.
What was your question?
Opportunities.
Yes. Talk about what we're doing with Brad. So we've entered in an EDA grant, because we were part of the tornado as well, and what we're trying to create is a true one-stop operation. So I do have mental health in the building already. We have Sky coming with GED coming into the building. We're waiting for about $3 million and some change to renovate the building. We want to make it bigger so that we can service more people. My building's so small right now, my coaches have waiting lists. So as I expand to make the building bigger, I'll be able to hire more coaches and service more people. Yeah. We're just, I, I actually saw Mr. Sexton yesterday at a different meeting, and he was going to reach out to the people in Atlanta and get me some word back today or tomorrow. So I should know something tomorrow. If we get this grant, we are going to be a true one-stop operation. But the beautiful part about it is we are right at the beginning of the bypass. So that big, beautiful building will be the entry point to the rest of the businesses that have been, already been renovated since the tornado. And we'll have Kentucky Career Center in there that houses the WEOLA funds. I want everyone together, because we're dealing with people with barriers. So if someone comes to my operation, and we want to co-enroll them at the Kentucky Career Center, I have to give them a bus pass and pray that they make it. But if I have the Kentucky Careers Center in their building, or what you were just talking about, now we're walking people across the hall, and we know they're getting the service, and my motto is, you get to me, I'll get you home. So I have vans, I have, we will get you home, just get to us. And that's the part that, so we want to be a one-stop operation, and we want, but again, we know what we, we're good at. So we stay in our lane, helping people, getting rid of those barriers. And then we have our employer partners that are willing to give people second chances. And then that's when expungement comes in. It's a, it's a full circle of services, and I just love what I do, because you can't give me a reason that will suffice you not working. Because I'm going to address it with any type of barrier reduction that we have. So yeah, I'll get off my soapbox. I love what we do. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. Really appreciate it. For being here, Chad. Yes, sir. Thank you all.
All right. We're going to prove it. Don't worry. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations. Thank you. Ordinance number BG 2024-13, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 18 Occupational License Fees and Taxes of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances related to allocation for special tourism projects.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So we have with us Ms. Sheri Murphy, with Executive Director of CBB. Sheri reached out to me several months ago, and I, I kind of, I've been dragging my feet on this, but we would like to propose an amendment to Chapter 18 pertaining to the CBB's transit room tax that they get, that, that we are going to propose changing the use of it. So I'd like to ask Sheri to come up and kind of explain the intent behind this and our plans for this fund.
Hasn't been that long. Thanks for hearing us out tonight. When, I've, I've had this position now here in Bowling Green for about five years, and one of the oddities, I kind of felt like when I got to the office, was that 75% of the 3% tax from the Holiday Inn University Plaza development, that's the hotel tax, was by ordinance put into a completely separate fund. It has its own application where people could come and request, and they have to come to our board first, and then we bring them to you all, and then we bring them to fiscal court. So there's lots of layers to that, and we're just trying to simplify the process somewhat in that we don't have all the presentations to do after they talk to the board. I don't believe we've ever had any disagreements when we did bring anyone to you all or fiscal court, that they didn't feel, you all, this board didn't feel like they were worthy of receiving the funds. So our request is that we just eliminate that from the ordinance, and those funds will then roll into the regular room tax. And we have already adopted our budget as of last week for the upcoming year and added a line item in there that's tourism development projects, where we would still use the same application, but we wouldn't have to have a separate budget, a separate account, and they would just become, come before our board for approval on what the request would be.
Thank you, Sheri, for explaining that. Commissioners?
How is this going to impact operation of the convention center? Will there be everything still?
Convention Center still gets their same, same cut, so.
It doesn't change any amount of money. They were already getting this 3%. We, we're just having to separate it and send it to them. So now we'll just send them all 3% instead of, it will also be simpler for our finance department, really.
Is the city and the county the entities that appoint your board members?
Yes.
So if we, we are doing a good job appointing board members, there really no need for redundancy in that. And now if we're not doing a good job appointing board members...
No, no. We have a great board, and I appreciate you.
You'll have to let us know.
Okay. Thank you very much. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2024-128.
Municipal order authorizing renewal of bid number 202346 for fire department uniforms from Galls LLC of Lexington, Kentucky, and Nats Outdoor Sports of Bowling Green, Kentucky, based on unit prices.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
In your packets is a stellar memo written by Chief Justin Brooks to explain this award. We bid this out last year, and we're all, all we're wanting to do is renew with the two companies that we're buying uniforms and equipment from, Galls and Nats. Both are, are willing to renew for this, this contract. Nats is keeping their prices the same, and I think Galls had to change just a few items due to the market, but overall, pretty close to the same prices. But Chief Brooks is here can answer your questions on this, but we recommend renewals with Galls and Nats Outdoor.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? None. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2024-129.
Municipal order authorizing accepting bid number 202448 for golf cart GPS and tracking system from GPS Technologies, Inc. of Omaha, Nebraska, in the total amount not to exceed $76,954.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
At our Crosswinds Golf Course, we have the GPS tracking system on our golf carts. It's really an added feature when you're playing golf to know, you look up and, well, I'm 150 yards out from the hole. We would like to do that same thing at our nine-hole courses, Paul Walker and Hobson Grove. We went out and requested bids. So, we got one from Club Car and one from GPS Technologies. GPS Technologies is the one we're currently using at Crosswinds. They were significantly lower price that came in for the two nine-hole courses. So, we're looking at the purchase of an additional 72 monitors with the GPS. It's roughly $49 per cart. This includes the geofence mapping, cart path only mapping. When you get off the guard pack, cart path, and you're in somewhere you're not supposed to be, the golf cart shuts down and makes you get out of that area. So, it's, I've been places where I didn't need to be. And the cart stalls, you put it in reverse, and you have to back it, back it to where you're supposed to be is usually how it works. And so, we are requesting your approval to, to, to do business with GPS Technologies for the two nine-hole courses and roll out these GPS systems with those golf carts that were recently purchased. Are they one or two years old? Two years old? Going on two years old, so they're, they're fairly new and can be easily adapted with this system. And Brent Belchers here can answer your questions on this, this item.
Okay, so, and this is for all three golf courses?
Oh, well, we've already got it at Crosswinds. So, we're just asking you to add the two nine-hole courses, 72 carts, 36 at each course.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? No further questions, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-130.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Purchase of Titleist Golf Products for Crosswinds and Paul Walker Golf Courses and Hobson Golf Course in Driving Range Through Non-Competitive Negotiations with Titleist of Chicago, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Move.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
You are asking that you approve this non-competitive negotiation with Titleist not to exceed $100,000. This would restock our golf shops with Titleist golf balls and any other Titleist-related brand merchandise that we need. Again, Brent Belchers here can answer your questions on this item.
Okay, commissioners, questions? None, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-131.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Purchase of Replacement Parts for the Public Works Department Fleet Division through non-competitive negotiations with various vendors in a total amount of $140,000.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
I believe our, our fleet division is now maintaining over 400 vehicles and 600 pieces of equipment. If that's, if I'm pretty close on that. And as you know, we need parts. And we don't have a huge warehouse to store every single part we can imagine that we would ever need. And so, we have this system that we, we've been using now for several years. We have non-competitive negotiations with Ken Smith, O'Reilly, Advance Auto, Napa, Truck Pro, Fleet Pride, and Windsor Corporations to purchase any and all supplies that we need to fix vehicles in our fleet, whether it be police cars or fire trucks if it's minor, and then, any, all, all the rest of our fleet with all of our city departments. But, recommending that we just renew this agreement with these, these companies so we can buy the supplies that we need and not have to stockpile them up somewhere. And Andy is here, can answer your que, any questions on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions at this time? None, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order, Municipal Order Number 2024-132.
Municipal Order Authorizing Accepting Bid Number 202442 for West End Greenways from Scott &amp; Murphy, Inc. of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $1,090,531.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So, if you'll remember, we were able to get a grant from the TAP grants, and that was a 76, 24% split. So, we are expecting to receive roughly $828,000 for this Greenways projects, Greenway projects that would, project that would connect the West End neighborhood to downtown via Hobson Grove to Kentucky Street. This is one we bid out, it came in overbid, and so, we kind of circled the wagons and went back out. Broke it up into two phases. And so, we got a good bid back from Scott &amp; Murphy for the $1,090,530 amount. And we would like to recommend that we award that, this project to Scott &amp; Murphy to do the West End Greenway Phase One construction. In your packets is a map of what that, where that goes. As you can see, it, it, it's where Veterans Meets, I believe Gordon Avenue. And Brent Belchers here, Brent Childers is here, I think, worked on this, as well as Andy can answer any of your questions on this project.
Commissioners, questions at this time? It's a great pathway, by the way. It's incredible. So, thank you. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-133.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Continuation of a Contract with J&amp;F Janitorial Services, Inc. of Somerset, Kentucky for Professional Cleaning Services in the Amount of $222,520.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
This was our, our professional cleaning services. We bid this out in 2020 and had option, it was a one-year contract option to renew for four additional years. This would be the last year that we are recommending to renew on that contract that's left. And so, it's with J&amp;F Janitorial Services. Dave Hayner is our facilities manager and is recommending that we go ahead and renew this for one more year. And in, in your memo there, it lists all the facilities that this, this covers. City Hall, City Hall Annex, Public Works Admin, Police, Operations at Lapsley, Fleet, NCS Building, our City Care Clinic, Fire Admin, our Landscape Building out, out the way, out Moreton Road, and then, recently added the White Building for anything we need to, to be done over there. But, I recommend your approval for this. And Andy Souza, our Public Works Director, can answer any questions on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? None, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-134.
Municipal Order Authorizing a Change Order to the Contracts with Amcon Environmental of Somerset, Kentucky, Geospec, Inc. of Raleigh, North Carolina, and Scott &amp; Ritter, Inc. of Bowling Green, Kentucky for Repairs to Butler County Landfill in the Amount of $16,770.08 for a Total Project Cost of $63,382.98.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
So, back in April, around April 25th, we had the, the windstorms going on, the one. And so, over at the Butler County Landfill, I'm not sure if anyone, you all have been over there, but it's all covered by this Geo membrane synthetic cap or EGSC. And it's, it's like huge tarps that probably the size of this build in the back parking lot that's covering a pretty good sloped landfill area. And so, wind got under one of those and ripped it up and exposed the landfill. Andy and I went over there, looked at it with, with Matt, and they were working on it that day. But, with, it was high winds. Soon after, there was rain coming, and they did the best they could, but couldn't get it all put back the way it was. And so, we, we kind of had a little overage in cost due to the difficulty. This stuff weighs so much. You have to have a special piece of equipment at the top of the hill to, to maneuver it, move it around, lay it back down. So, anyway, we're asking your permission. This was an emergency purchase at the time that we had to do. It was under my purview of $50,000. We, we okayed it, went as far as we could with it. But, then, we were short $16,770. So, we're coming to you tonight, asking for your, your approval for that change order to get our contractors paid for that project. And we think it's in good shape now. I'm sorry, Matt snuck in on me. Matt Pals here has been working on this project and can answer any questions you might have on this. But, this one's a little different than the Glen Lilly landfill. But, it's, it's, it's a big one and requires a lot of attention sometimes.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? None, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-135.
Municipal Order Authorizing an Amendment to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Years 2023, 2024 through 2026, 2020, 2027.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
As with, like the budget, we like to keep our CIP program, Capital Improvement Program, up to, up to date. This is the Second Amendment that we need to do for fiscal year FY '24. Katie's put together a really good summary memo. What's in this is we added Fire Station 7 repairs that we talked about last meeting, along with the low floor, cutaway buses that we're purchasing. And then, Katie's also updated several projects to their actual cost and dollar values that we have expended. So, Katie can answer any questions you might have on this, this update of the CIP, Second Amendment.
Need to give Megan Van Meter the credit. She took and put all this together.
Yeah, Megan.
I just proofed it, so hopefully, it's good. I believe this is the third year now, third or fourth year, that we started doing this amendment process for our CIPs. And I think it's been fairly successful. But, we will start this all over again with our upcoming multi-year for the 2025 through 2028. Yeah, 2028.
Twenty-four drops off.
Yeah. And so, we will bring this back before you in a brand-new year setting in probably September or October. So, this is just kind of closing out the year for the 24, FY '24 mostly, and a few of the out-years in here, but mostly FY '24.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions at this time? None, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2024-14, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance relating to Budget Amendment. Ordinance amending, ordinance approving Amendment Number Four to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2024.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Sorry, repeat which item this is.
Twenty-one, ordinance number BG 2024-14.
Budget Amendment.
Fourteen, I'm sorry, got it. So, this is our fourth budget amendment for the FY '24, our current-year budget. In this, you'll see some, some updates to our contributions we got for Duck and Hines Days, along with the grant we got for our password management system. But, there's a little bit of everything in here. Also, you'll see where, where we are using our underspending, our anticipated underspending in the general fund to transfer out to multiple project funds to cover expenses coming up on those, along with our reserves that we are expected to come in, in a good shape. We're going to transfer those out to other funds for, for their use. You'll see the CD, BG, CV grant funds in here, the opioid settlement fund expenditures, things like that. But, Katie put this together along with her assistant CFOs and can answer any questions you might have on this one.
Okay, thank you. Mizel. Questions at this time? None, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-136.
Unit Sporter Approving Conveyance and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Quick Claim Deed to Convey Approximately 10 Acres, More or Less of Property Off of Pioneer Drive to Lord Corporation.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to ask Hillary to explain this item and give you the rundown or summary on what we're doing this for.
Part of a records audit for Lord Corporation. They discovered that they deeded property to us as part of industrial revenue bonds. We don't do those anymore, but we used to do them, the county does them now in the 70s. So, they deeded the property that their building is on to us as part of security for those bonds, and it has never been deeded back to them. So, they're paying taxes on it, they own it, but there's no deed back. So, I told her we would do a quick claim deed back to them, just to clear that up. This may not be the only one of those that we have, I don't know. But, these, these are bonds from 1975. They were paid in full, and so, we need to give them their property back.
And this.
Fifty years old.
They are, they are in the process of having a state audit, and they have all these things they have to check off. And one of them was their title. And as part of their title searches, they realized that this particular, you know, they have, I think, maybe 27 acres, but this particular parcel just was not deeded back. And those processes are always confusing. You know, when we do bonds, we've got leases and partial releases. And so, there are a lot of documents, but there's just not a deed back to them, so.
Their building actually sits on most of this 10 acres, right?
Right, and it was part of their building and an expansion is why we did the bonds. But, it, it should have been deeded back a long time ago and just wasn't, so.
Thank you for explaining. Questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-137.
Unit Sporter Approving and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Lease Agreement with Awaken Bakery LLC related to the Lease of a Portion of City Sidewalk at 300 East Main Avenue.
Move.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
This is like all of our other sidewalk leases downtown. This, this business here is located, I think, on the corner of Main and Center. And it's in Awaken Bakery LLC. They would like to do a table outside, a little sidewalk cafe. Hillary has worked on this. I think Andy may have gone down and make sure the spacing is correct on the sidewalk. But, we believe it's ready to go and ask for your approval. Hillary can answer, answering any questions you may have on the agreement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? All right. None, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-138.
Unit Sporter Approving the Appointment of Lindsay Howchen and Reappointment of Brenda Willoughby to the Bowling Green Historic Preservation Board.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. This one is, we actually have one new appointee. And we have Brenda Willoughby will be a reappointee. But, just a little bit about Lindsay Howchen. She is a product of Western Kentucky University. She was awarded the Landmark Association Award by the Gene Thomason Historic House Award for Renovation for her historic house on 10th Avenue. So, this is right down her lane. She was a third-generation WK employee, two-time WKU graduate. She leads the Office of Scholarship Development, which mentors WKU students applying for national scholarships to fund academic extras beyond tuition covers. And she is an active in the Women's Fund of South Central Kentucky and served as inaugural board member and served as a mentor in the Jonesville Academy and the International Center of Kentucky and several WKU student organizations, including Spirit Masters. So, introducing Lindsay Howchen to the board, and she'll be a great asset. So, these are my two appointee recommendations.
Okay, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-139.
Unit Sporter Approving the Reappointments of Michelle Gorman and Seth McLean to the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. I was a little bit worried there because as she says, hopefully, we have good appointees. Sherri Murphy said we do have good appointees. Michelle Gorman and Zeph McLean have served admirably for the Bowling Green
Michelle Gorman and Seth McLean have served admirably for the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. And they are volunteering to continue to serve and I recommend their continuation. Okay, roll call please.
Hill, Perrigen, Bailey, Beasley Brown, Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2024-140.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Jeff Holman and Anthony LaPointe to the City of Bowling Green Code Enforcement and Nuisance Board.
Moved.
Second. Move by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. I will tell you, our appointees that have been continued serving on the Code Enforcement Nuisance Board are earning their keep. Not much pay goes with it, but a, an admirable job. Recently commended the board on how well they handled the board and the community. And I'm proud of them and they did it professionally. And I can, they want to continue to serve, which I'm surprised, but I'm happy that they are willing to do that. And they have my recommendation for continuation.
That's a tough one, but I want to say thanks to everybody that serves on that board. It's definitely a challenging board.
Both of these gentlemen, neither one of them could believe it, it'd already been three years.
And Ryan Dearbone, he actually chairs the board, does an exceptional job. Okay, no further questions, roll call please.
Hill, Perrigen, Bailey, Beasley Brown, Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2024-12, second reading, end binding.
Ordinance adopting annual city budget, ordinance adopting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025 by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
Moved.
Move by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. This is our second reading, it was a five and oh from our last commission meeting. I know we had some discussion and I would just like to reiterate, this is a very aggressive budget, but I'm very proud of our city that we're not borrowing money, that we're solvent and we're able to do these things within the means that we made. And those were difficult decisions for our board to make. And we all had different reasons for choosing those paths, but this, the pay was significant. I'll never forget, as mayor, sitting down with my police officers stating, sir, you have a problem. And you, this problem is going to exacerbate and it's going to get worse. And we have people leaving and attrition is not there for replacement. And pay was a significant issue. And I remember Aaron Holesley asking us for an opportunity to do a pay study and we said no. And, but we really leaned on Jeff and your team, Katie, your advisement across the board. And we're grateful that you got us to where we are today and we're able to prove an aggressive budget, 170 million plus, which is, blows my mind, but that's the city we are and we're sustaining it at a great level and I just wanted to say thank you. Missioners?
And I'll echo that, I was actually met not just with the police department, some members of the police department, but also met with some members of the fire department as well. So I told them I was on board from day one, because I think that if you're going to have somebody that's going to be a first responder, make sure they're taken care of. But also giving the employees that start here in the city government a way to basically where they can take care of their own lives and their families is a great thing to do. And I was on board with that from day one as well. So I'm glad this board was able to do that, because now we know that our employees know that they, we see them and we want to make sure that they're taken care of, just like our families are taken care of.
Anyone else?
I have actually a statement that I prepared that I'd like to read for tonight's budget, for the 2024 annual budget. There's, there's some numbers in here, so I'm going to try to go slow and make sense of this. But on April 18th in 2023, we held the first reading of rightsizing the occupational, the city's occupational tax. With a second reading on May 2nd, that's in 2023. The adjustment was passed by a three to two vote on both readings. Leading up to this vote, each one of us was informed by our trusted senior leaders to include the city manager and the CFO. As this vote was an extremely hard decision, the leadership spent time with each of us and made the case for rightsizing the occupational tax from 1.85 to 2%, where it was back, where it was back in 2006. This 0.15%, so 0, .0015, uh, .0015 increase was intentionally timed to begin January 1, 2024, which is the same as the state's income tax reduction from 4.5% to 4%. This resulted in a net decrease of minus .35 in payroll taxes for anyone working inside the city or a net increase in their take-home pay. Again, the rightsizing was simply putting the occupational tax back to where it had been for almost 20 years prior. With inflationary pressures coupled with the need to remain competitive with salaries as well as increasing fund, funding for capital improvement projects, three of us voted yes to move the city forward and avoid having to cut services to our citizens. This budget that we are giving a second vote on tonight will represent a full year of the adjusted occupational tax rate. The adjustment will realize about $5.73 million. The employee salary adjustments will cost about $2.13 million, as well as an increase of $3.8 million in capital improvement projects across our great city, which results in a $16.4 million in capital investment spending for our community in FY2025. Since over 70% of our city's budget is funded through occupational tax, this represented the best way to allow us to invest in our most important asset, our city employees, as well as capital improvement projects across the city. To attract the best of the best, we must be competitive with salaries and benefits to compete with the private sector. In July 2022, this commission voted to adjust the police starting pay from $42,600 to $51,500 and adjust all others accordingly for 126 sworn-off officers. Additionally, in July of 2023, we adjusted the starting salaries again for our police officers to minimum pay of $60,000, impacting 138 sworn positions. We also adjusted the fire department's starting pay from $45,500 to $54,000. We adjusted the police and fire salaries to remain competitive and stop the bleed we were experiencing due to the state police and sheriff's department's pay adjustments. This decision, along with new recruiting strategies, has been successful in reaching the recruiting goals for our department, or getting closer to reaching the recruiting goals for our department. We also adjusted all of our part-time employees as well. At the first reading of the new budget, all of us expressed our appreciation for being able to adjust all city employees' salaries and again tonight, using the new revenues largely generated through the decision to rightsize the occupational tax by three commissioners. I stand by that stance. It is with great pride that I voted to rightsize the occupational tax to pay our public safety and all city employees a competitive salary and to increase the amount dedicated to much-needed capital improvements, to not just keep the amazing employees we have, but to recruit for openings in the future. The continued success of our community was at stake with the decision to rightsize our occupational tax. And I am grateful we made the right decision for our community's future. Due to the very difficult decision made by three commissioners, we can remain a competitive and desired employer as well as a premier place to live in the state of Kentucky. All of this leads me to the reason I am a strong yes vote for the FY2025 annual budget second reading. Thank you.
Could I say it really quick? The reason why I voted no, and I stand by that, there was no new taxes. We were ahead, and we were ahead. We had thousands of jobs that were coming. And if you go back and look at it, I said we need to wait to see where we're going to be once we get those jobs there. Because those people who are getting from the trans park, when the battery plant, and also having the gas, the glass, Tysons and the glass, new manufacturing that's coming, we don't know what that would have been until they got it. We would have been receiving occupational tax from them. So I said no, and I stand by that, there was no new taxes. Because if we would have been still above that, we could have came back and basically said, you know what? Let's see if we can increase it by a little bit. But if we would have been below that, at that point, would have been a smarter move to see if we're going to be there. So I waited. I'm not going to be a rubber stamp person that's just going to stamp it and say yes each and every time. I do trust the people that are here, but I also want to listen to the people that are out there who are suffering each and every day. So thus who I'm beholden to is the voters, because I know what it's like to suffer. So that's the reason why I said no that day and I will say no today until we come back and basically look at it and see where would our budget have would have been once those jobs would have been filled and they're paying into the occupational tax. They're not telling you those numbers. That's what's not included.
Okay, any further discussion? None, roll call please.
Hill, Perrigen, Bailey, Beasley Brown, Alcott.
Yes. Okay, we're checking for public comments, we don't have any. Our next meeting will be 16 July at 2024. And we hope everyone has a wonderful holiday and just one caveat, Dunking Hines Day was an ultimate success. I think over 17,000 people participated. Want to thank Brent Childers and Talia Butler and the incredible work that happened across. So thank you very much. All right, we are adjourned. Oh, we are going to closed session, sorry.